I'm gonna go ahead and have to start.
Go ahead.
And Councilman Davis, if you could.
I'll figure it out.
Talk with Clerk Jones. At this time, I would like to call the Monday, November 9th, 2017 Common Council Meeting to order. Clerk Jones, I believe that you would like to make some comments regarding the length of this meeting and other expectations.
Yes. Good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default to maintain good quality for council and yourselves. If you would like to speak during the meeting on a specific agenda item, please submit your request in the chat. Directions to submit in the chat is, are listed in the chat. We ask that you provide your full name and address as those are required for all speakers at in-person council meetings. If you would like to be called on during the meeting to provide public input, please insert the following into the chat, and you will be called on during the relevant time for public input. Insert your name, your address, and that you would like to speak for or against the agenda item. You will then be given five minutes to speak.
Thank you, Clerk Jones. Due to the executive order by Indiana Governor Eric Holcomb, the South Bend Common Council meeting will be legally held by way of virtual meeting by using Microsoft Teams. At this time, I'm happy to introduce Pastor Ryan Gaiso, who will give our invocation.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. If prayer is something you're comfortable with, I invite you to pray with me now. God, we thank you for the blessing of this night, for life and community, and the opportunity to seek the peace of our city together. I thank you for these leaders and all who are represented by them, and we pray for all those who feel the furthest from power and representation. Tonight, we especially pray for those in our community battling this pandemic, and we pray for empathy and the courage to act with a love that protects. May you guide these leaders with a necessary wisdom and discernment for the matters at hand. Amen.
Thank you so much for that beautiful invocation. Now we'll go to our roll call. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Present.
Councilmember Davis?
Henry's here.
Vice President McBride?
Present.
Councilmember Warner?
Here.
Councilmember Teska? Oh, I'm sorry. I keep doing that. Okay. Councilmember Niskoski?
Present.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Present.
Councilmember Hammond?
Present.
President White?
Present.
Eight present.
Thank you. We will not have a report from the Subcommittee on Minutes, as most of you were. Our former Councilmember Jake Teska won his bid to represent House District 7, and we will be appointing someone else to serve on this committee. We will have the minutes at our next upcoming council meeting. Under special business, I would like to report that, as you're aware again, former Councilmember Jake Tesco won his bid to represent House District 7 in the Indiana General Assembly. According to the caucus attorney at the State House, he was informed that in this particular seat, the winner of the election technically assumes office the day after the election. Jake tendered his letter of resignation to me and to St. Joseph County Circuit Court Clerk. A notice must be given to the Chair of the St. Joseph County Republican Party within 72 days receipt of his resignation. That letter has been submitted, and the process of filling the vacancy is forthcoming. I would like to ask you to join in me, join with me in wishing Mr. Jake Tesco the very best as he journey into this new position, and we know that he will do a wonderful job. If there's no other comments, we'll go directly to the Committee of the Whole. Is, I would like to entertain a motion to resolve into the Committee of the Whole at this time.
So moved.
Is there a, mhm, it's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Committee of the Whole is now in session. This is the portion of the council's meeting where bills are given a second reading and public hearing. I wish to share with you that the bills that will be given a second reading and public hearing have been given a first reading and second reading meeting and public hearing prior to this evening's meeting. In addition, you will hear from the chairperson of the committee where the bill was discussed and the results of their discussion. If the proposed ordinance is a zoning ordinance, a report from a staff member will be given. In all other situations, the formal presentation on the proposed ordinance will immediately follow the committee report. The formal presentation shall be untimed. So we're going to start with our first bill, which is Bill 5620. So Clerk Jones, will you please give Bill 5620 a second reading? 5620, public hearing on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana to vacate the following described property: The first 10-foot-wide north-south alley west of Stanfield Street and north of Corby Boulevard, running south approximately 85 feet from an existing east-west public alley to its termination point, South Bend, Indiana. Thank you. There is a committee report, and that came out of Public Works and Property Vacation Committee. I'm the Chair of that committee, and that was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Is the petitioner present?
Yes, Mike Dance from Dance, Harder &amp; Associates, 1643 Commiss Drive here in South Bend, representing the petitioners. And what we're requesting is a vacation of 85 feet of a 10-foot-wide public alley that's located between Stanfield Street and Niles Avenue. There's an existing east-west alley that will remain open for traffic. Our petitioner owns the four adjacent properties to the requested vacated alley. What we're ending up asking is just to remove that and to close it completely. It's not paved right now, and the petitioners would like to close it so that they have control over that. There is an existing garage that does face the requested alley, and as part of the approval from the Board of Works, when we go through the subdivision procedure, we will create an ingress, an ingress easement that allows that garage to continue to have access to the east-west alley. What we'd ask council to do is approve the vacation. And if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dance. Councilmembers, do you have any questions for the petitioner? Okay, I do not see any questions from the councilmembers. At this time, we are going to go to the public portion hearing. Is there any front, anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of Bill 5620?
There is no one from the public wishing to speak either in favor of or in opposition of Bill 5620.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Jones. At this point, then, the public hearing on Bill 5620 is now closed. If there are any statements that councilmembers would like to make regarding Bill 5620? Yeah, seeing none, I will now entertain a motion regarding Bill 5620.
I move that we send Bill 5620 to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
I second that motion.
There has been a motion, and it has been properly seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please take the roll call? Yes. Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes. Thank you. Bill 5620 will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. I will now entertain a motion to rise from the Committee of the Whole and report back to the full council. May I have a motion?
So moved.
I second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, would you take the roll call, please? Yes. Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you so much. The full council is now back in session. This is the portion of our meeting where bills are given a third reading, and action is taken regarding bills that were heard during the Committee of the Whole. Clerk Jones, would you please give Bill 56-20 a third reading?
5620, third reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana to vacate the following described: The first 10-foot-wide north-south alley west of Stanfield Street and north of Corby Boulevard, running south approximately 85 feet from an existing east-west public alley to its termination point, South Bend, Indiana.
Yes, Councilwoman Sheila Niskoski, is there a recommendation from the Committee of the Whole?
You're muted.
So sorry about that, President White.
No problem.
It was sent to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any comments you wish to make at this time regarding Bill 56-20? If not, I would like to entertain a motion for Bill 56-20 that it will be for passage. I need a motion and a second.
I'm moved for passage?
Second.
It's been moved and properly seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Bill 56-20 has passed. Clerk Jones, will you please read Resolution 20-37, please?
Resolution 20-37, a resolution of the South Bend Common Council supporting the Medical Education Foundation's open letter to our community business and political leaders.
Thank you so much. Is there a committee report?
The Health and Public Safety Committee met this afternoon and sends this resolution to the full council with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask sponsors to present Resolution 20-37. We do ask that you state your name and address. So I think I will start with Councilwoman Sharon McBride.
Thank you. I would like to acknowledge the co-sponsors, President White and Sheila Niskoski. Also want to know that I received correspondence from Rachel Tomas Morgan and also Councilwoman Hammond, their support as well. I would like to read the resolution. It says, "A resolution of the Common Council supporting the Medical Education Foundation's open letter to our community business and political leaders. Whereas on October 20th, 2020, Indiana Governor Eric Holcomb issued Executive Order 2-47 as the eighth renewal of the Public Health Emergency Declaration for the COVID-19 outbreak. And whereas Executive Order 20-47 continued uninterrupted, the Public Health Emergency Declaration first issued on March 6, 2020. And whereas COVID-19 cases continue to increase at an alarming rate in the City of South Bend and surrounding areas. And whereas the Medical Education Foundation, with a board comprised of leaders from major health organizations, physicians, scientists, education and business communities, has issued an open letter to our community business and political leaders expressing concern for the health and economic success of our community. And whereas the letter strongly urges and supports the science-based wearing of masks, social distancing, and regular handwashing, not only to protect each individual, but also for the protection of the most vulnerable residents, especially those with underlying health conditions. And whereas, the letter asks political leaders to pass ordinances that support counties' public health departments as they try to balance the economic and community health interest of all residents. And whereas the failure to immediately take action to enforce good health protocols may lead to a shutdown of the local economy together with an increase in COVID-19 cases. Now therefore, be resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana is followed. Section 1, South Bend Common Council supports the actions urged by the Medical Education Foundation. Section 2, the South Bend Common Council specifically urges the Sancho County authorities to pass and enforce ordinances mandating the use of masks, social distancing, and handwashing as soon as possible. Section 3, this resolution shall be in full force and effect from after its adoption by the Common Council and approval by the mayor."
Thank you. I will know, I will now go to co-sponsor, Councilwoman Sheila Niskoski.
Thank you, President White, and thank you, Councilwoman McBride, for bringing this resolution forward. And I was happy to be a co-sponsor with both of you on it. As I stated in committee, the facts are pretty clear right now in our community. Dr. Fox and the Medical Education Foundation are asking for help from its political leaders and the business community. The numbers here, October, we had the deadliest month with 73 deaths in our community. Currently, we have 2,017 active COVID-19 cases in the past seven days as of November the 7th. And I know all of us has been touched in some way by someone that has either passed from this or has suffered major medical consequences of COVID-19. So at this point, I am asking for your support of this resolution, and I will hope that my fellow councilmembers will support this resolution. It is good for our community, and it's for the health of our community. Thank you.
Thank you as well. As one of the, as one of the co-sponsor, it was an honor to be part of this resolution. As Councilwoman Sheila Niskoski has stated, all of us have been touched, impacted in regards to the pandemic that we are experiencing, both on a personal level, but also as we begin to look at the impact that it's had on our communities, especially, especially communities of color and within the city, the state, and at the national level, too. This is a good resolution, and I encourage our, my fellow councilmembers to support this resolution. Prior to going to the public hearing portion, I would now ask councilmembers if you have any questions that you would like to ask of the sponsors. And we will come back, and each councilmember will have opportunity to make statements. Councilwoman Lori Hammond?
President White, mine is not a question. I can address my comment after questions are given.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Henry Davis, I see your hand.
Yes, you do. Thank you. I'm asking questions about not the resolution, about the resolution. Mike, you made a point, and I was going to make this point, about the communities of color, black and brown, being more adversely impacted by this COVID. Myself, I was stricken with COVID. My wife was as well. I was probably, you know, down for about a matter of three weeks because I do have a pre-exist, pre-existing health condition. So it hit me pretty hard, and this was during the month of August. I am asking because I do know the ill effects from it. My question at this point is, what are we going to do to help with testing? What are we going to do with help as it relates to making sure people have access to the healthcare that is available as they fight this nasty virus and this pandemic that we're currently suffering from?
Thank you, Councilmember Davis. That is an excellent question, and I do know that we will be working very closely with all of our county health professionals and really trying to look at those, I mean, the strategies and ways in which we can ensure that we can increase the testing and availability of tests as well. And that's something that I know that we will be working with our county officials and I, and the Health Department Director as well. I'm going to see if Councilwoman Sharon McBride would like to make any comments in response to the question that you have posed, as well as Councilwoman Sheila Niskoski.
Thank you so much. I know, I don't know if Dr. Bob is on the line or not, or if Newbold, when he speaks, if he can speak more on that. But we have been working with the county. I do know that Walgreens and CBS are now providing testing at a lower rate or at some no cost. So we're continuing to work with the county health department as well to continue to find ways for people to get tested at no cost.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sheila Niskoski, would you like to add any comments?
Other than, of course, everything, everybody wants to see more testing. In the 6th District, they have done a lot of the mobile testing sites. The old Walgreens over here I have seen set up, the Armory over there off of Kimball Street has testing. But I don't believe that you can ever have enough testing. And with the way that the numbers are spiking, that they, the leaders in our health community are asking for us to help them. And I know that they're looking at every, every angle of this pandemic to do everything that we can to keep our communities safe.
Thank you. I do see.
I do have another question. I'm not finished. If you don't mind.
No.
Okay.
Then I will to Councilman Kenneth Lee.
Great. So do our opinion in this whole pandemic thing matter? I mean, far as men and elected officials on the city side? We're clearly depending on the county health officials to, I guess, mark out the, the way that we're going to do things here locally. However, my other ideas or thoughts about this is how are we getting more material to educate people about face masks, wanting to, you know, certain places with your first face mask on? I'm starting to see a lot more of these, you know, signs saying you cannot come into this business unless you have a face mask, which is great. But there are so many other businesses that are not necessarily enforcing that idea or that thought process. So again, like I said, I suffered from it. I understand it. I get it. But I don't think everyone else gets it because they probably just haven't had it, or it hasn't, you know, impacted their family. So are, how are we being integrated in this conversation to make sure that we are crossing every T and I and every I?
If you don't mind, I can answer that. And I would love to get with you, Councilman Davis, about your ideas. But I know that speaking in the COVID meetings, one of the things that the city, I don't know if Caleb is on the line, we talked about getting out correspondence to different, whether it's churches or communities of color as well to get out more information, along with the Chamber of Commerce. We've talked about making sure that everyone had an access to the knowledge of the testing sites, about social distancing. And I know that we have passed before, I can't remember the name of the information sheet that goes out that is both bilingual and in English. So there's correspondence out there. I can make sure that if there are businesses or groups of people or organizations who need that information, we can get it to them. But I would love to hear any information that is requested as well.
Thank you. We'll now go to Councilman Kenneth Lee.
I just want to say that I support this, this legislation, this resolution. I believe that it is time for all of us to all work together as far as the health community, elected officials, and also the faith community, and even people within the community that, to push that message of wearing masks, being safe. Because again, as, as Councilman Davis said, you know, COVID is not a, it's a life or death situation, and it's very easy to be exposed to it and not even know it. So I think that it's very important that we send a very strong message that we're unified, that we are going to stand together, and that wearing masks, hand sanitizer, washing your hands, these are the things that are going to help get us through this pandemic and turn it around. So I just wanted to, to say that I support it.
Thank you. We'll now move to, there's no other questions. We'll move to the public hearing portion. I will come back. Prior to entertain a motion, I know that there are councilmembers who would like to make personal statements. And the first councilperson that would do so after the public hearing portion has been closed will be Councilwoman Lori Hammond. Clerk Jones, is there anyone waiting to speak in support of Resolution 20-37? I do think there are some individuals who are waiting.
Just, I, they, let me see. I don't, okay. Yes, we have Mr. Phil Newbold.
Yes.
Mr. Newbold, if you would give your name and your address for the record, please, and you have five minutes.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to address the council. My name is Phil Newbold. I live at 1139 A Line Court here in South Bend, Indiana. I'll be very brief. We are at war. And quite frankly, in many countries around the world, we're losing. And in this country, many communities are losing. They are losing the war to this terrible virus, and it is hitting and affecting people of color, those with underlying conditions, and some of the most vulnerable citizens in our community. We have to turn to science-based resolutions that have the weight of clinical and epidemiological leaders, and they are urging us across this country to do three things, and that's what this ordinance asks us to do. Number one, mask. Number two, socially distance. And number three, wash our hands. We are so fortunate in this community to have good testing. Not only our health systems, but the South Bend Medical Foundation has partnered with the country's largest tester, LabCorp, and they are making tests available, and they are making them as less expensive as absolutely possible, and the turnaround times are fantastic. And so we are going to continue to work on testing so that everyone has not only access, but also has a price that's reasonable, affordable. And so I think right now, we need to add a very strong voice, as many of you have already stated, to this war against this virus, that we have to give our county health department the kinds of enforcement and the kinds of support so that they can wage a better war, and we, of all things, have to avoid a shutdown. That is going to hurt some of the smallest, most vulnerable businesses in our community, and that is the default position. What we can do proactively right now are these three items, and we should all get behind that, join hands, and make sure that this community is not going to lose the battle against this virus. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address you.
And thank you for your comments as well. Clerk Jones, is there anyone else waiting to speak in support of Resolution 20-37?
Okay, at this
Okay, at this time, I don't see anyone expressing interest to speak in, either in support or in opposition of this resolution.
Thank you so much. The public hearing portion is now closed prior to entertaining a motion regarding resolution twenty dash thirty-seven. I will now go back to my fellow councilmembers and ask if you have uh any statements. Um, at this time, uh the first councilperson would be uh Councilwoman Lori Hammond.
Thank you, President White. Um, I would just like to add to the information that has already been shared. I am a school teacher, and I just want to point out the situation that our um young residents of the city are experiencing right now. We have um many of them who have not been in schools since last spring, and we have multiple incidences of depression, um children reacting very poorly to the levels of isolation that they are experiencing. So along with the concern about having to shut down the economy, the children that have been able to get back to face-to-face learning in the classrooms would suffer, suffer greatly if we do not get a handle on the um exploding cases that we are seeing in our city and in our county. We want these children to be able to continue to learn. Many of these um children, as well as the parents, feel that they have lost easily, if not a full year, half a year of their education, because it is just not an effective way to learn online. So I just wanted to add that portion to the concerns that we should all have for our young residents. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Hammond. I hopefully I have everyone in, in order. If not, please forgive me. I think the second hand that I saw that went up was Councilwoman Sharon McBride, followed by Councilmember Henry Davis and Councilwoman Rachel Tomas Morgan. Hopefully I have them in the right order.
Thank you so much.
Uh, Councilman Kenneth Lee.
I just wanted to uh state that I appreciate the support um of this resolution. My sister uh currently is uh experiencing and, and down with COVID, and my niece and nephew has suffered and is, one have been in uh on a ventilator. So this has hit home uh several times and I have very passionate about it. Um, some people that have lost their lives to it, so this is something that we have to take serious and uh unite together as well. So I thank you all for allowing the opportunity for us to present the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Henry Davis.
Thank you. I'm um, I'm, I'm thanking all of you that uh thought enough of us to put together this resolution. I'm just going to implore um to those uh council leadership and even myself um that uh that there needs to be uh some sort of game plan put together. I don't know if the game plan just, is just community releases, posters out to as many businesses as we can get them to, we do a face mask giveaway, but we've been at this since uh March. And so I hope that there is a, another level of game plan to how we are offering ourselves and our resources to the community to ensure uh that we keep our numbers low. So whatever is available, uh if, if I am needed at a table, my conversation, my hands, my feet, I am certainly there, but I'm looking forward to uh some sort of level game plan that is going to allow us to move forward outside of just, you know, discussing uh the ill effects from this horrible uh disease or virus or whatever you want to call it. It's just, it's killing a lot of people, and um I'm looking forward to it, and thank you again for it, and I, and you certainly have my vote.
Thank you so much. Councilwoman Rachel Tomas Morgan.
Yes, I just want to add my thanks to the sponsors who brought this resolution to us councilmembers. Um, the goal is to keep our community safe and to keep our businesses open um and to be able to um, and so that the community also has the confidence to be able to uh, to shop, to um, to franchise businesses. Um, so this is an important step that this council can make to pass this resolution. Furthermore, the resolution encourages all of us to urge our Saint Joe County leaders uh to pass uh legislation uh to this regard. And so I look forward to continuing to encourage our county council members and leaders to pass the pending legislation, um, and I encourage our other council members to do this so as well. Thank you.
Thank you as well. Councilmember, member Kenneth Lee.
Yes, again, thank you to the sponsors of this bill. Thank you to everyone who um have voiced their opinion and how important this really is. Um, we also need to think about the people who have been affected by it, and um when you've been affected by COVID, it is one of the most scariest phone calls you could ever receive, and not much really is out there to help you unless you're, you know, right now the hospitals are turning people away. That's serious, because you get this disease and then you wonder, what do I do? Or will I be one of the ones that don't make it? And so we also need to figure out ways to make sure that, that people get the assistance and the help that they need, because everybody doesn't have insurance and everybody doesn't have um a good support system. And that is very much important if you're going to survive going through COVID. So um, we need to take this seriously, everyone, because you never know when you're going to be exposed to it, and you don't know the effects it's going to have. It's a scary, scary, scary virus to catch, and so we need to really continue to focus on wearing masks, washing our hands, hand sanitizer, but also you have to think of the capacity of a person who contracted, and you have to, you know, you go through the sickness part, which is debilitating, and then you also have to deal with the realities of your life that if you're going to be off of work, you know, making sure that employers are um, you know, supportive, you know, figuring out how, you know, if you got to be off of work for three weeks, that's, that's big for, for some people. Some people can't afford to miss one week of work. So the supports that need to be around these individuals who may have contracted it, and then also um making sure that there are the resources there. So I fully support this, and uh my heart is very sympathetic to those who have contracted COVID nineteen.
Thank you for your comments. Are there any other council members who would like to make any comments prior to the time that I would ask for a motion regarding this resolution? Any more comments? Seeing no one, I would now like to entertain a motion regarding resolution twenty dash thirty-seven.
I would like to move resolution twenty dash thirty-seven for passage.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Um, Council, Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Resolution twenty dash thirty-seven has now been adopted. Clerk Jones, will you please give first reading to Bill fifty-seven dash twenty?
Yes. Fifty-seven twenty, first reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of South Bend, Indiana, amending Article thirteen, Section fourteen dash one-twenty-three of the South Bend Municipal Code to add definitions for cigar and cigarette, amending Article thirteen, Section fourteen dash one-twenty-four of the South Bend Municipal Code to eliminate tobacco specialty bars and tobacco retail stores from places in which smoking is prohibited, amending Article thirteen, Section fourteen dash one-twenty-seven of the South Bend Municipal Code to include exemptions for tobacco specialty bars and tobacco retail stores and adding Section fourteen dash one-twenty-seven severalability to the South Bend Municipal Code.
Thank you. I would now like to entertain a motion to send Bill fifty-seven dash twenty to Health and Public Safety Committee for a committee meeting, public hearing, and council meeting, public hearing, third reading for November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty.
So moved.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Jones, will you please call the roll?
Yes. Councilmember Niskoski?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomas Morgan?
Aye.
Councilmember Hammond?
Aye.
Councilmember Lee?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Vice President McBride?
Aye.
Councilmember Warner?
Aye.
President White?
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. We'll now move to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business at this time? If so, council members, will you indicate by raising your hand any unfinished business? Okay, we'll now move to new business. I would like to announce once again that the last meeting for the Common Council for the year of two thousand and twenty will be Monday, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty. Councilwoman Lori Hammond, I see your hand.
I just wanted to present some new businesses at time.
Yes, we're under new business, and I would have to, I shared with the council members, I have a mandatory training that I have to be logged in by seven-fifty, so I'm going to turn this portion of the meeting over to Vice President McBride, and um she will continue with new business priv- privilege of the floor. And again, as always, I wish every one of you a healthy and safe uh weekend and week, and look forward to uh talking with you once again. This is unfortunate, but I have no other, I have to be on because of the position that I hold. So at this point, I'll turn this portion of our meeting over to Vice President Sharon McBride, new business, and Councilwoman Lori Hammond has some uh new business that she would like to share at this time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, President White.
You're welcome.
Yes, I just wanted to bring before the council, um, I'm very honored to have been asked to join a new organization, which is the Citywide Literacy Initiative, along with other leaders of our community and members of the South Bend Community School Corporation Empowerment Zone. Um, the goal of the Citywide Literacy Initiative is to promote literacy in the homes by working with families and parents to encourage them to read and engage with their young children in literacy, and in addition, um hosting reading and activity nights at the public schools um along with other planned um activities. The Toys for Tots, which is held every year because of COVID nineteen, has dramatically scaled back the event for this year, which will have an impact on the um gifts that the children receive. So in light of that, um, the Citywide Literacy Initiative is planning to host the All-In for Kids Literacy Fun Run on first Friday, December fourth. And um it will be a very short kind of jaunt from downtown to Howard Park. We will be um accepting literacy toy donations as um the registration fee for the run, as well as cash donations for the registration. Um, the reason I am bringing this before the council is a couple reasons. We're asking for um just a couple of basic things. First of all, if any of the council members or their families would want to volunteer to work on the event on the fourth, um, we would very much appreciate any time and energy that you would be willing to give. Also, um, we need some assistance to help to find community partners that would be willing to work with the Citywide Literacy Initiative um for some of our future activities, as well as the All-In for Kids Fun Run on the fourth. And just so the council knows, we have been in contact and are working with um DTSB, with Erin Perry from um Venue Parks and Arts, as well as I've been in contact with the mayor's office to coordinate the event on December fourth. Um, and this is just the beginning of the events and activities that we are hoping to bring forth to help to encourage literacy in our children in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hammond. Is it possible for you to send some uh information to the council?
I absolutely will.
Thank you so much. Uh, Councilman Davis?
Hey, thank you. Appreciate that. I just want to send a, a big um congratulations and, and applause to our former mayor, Pete Bullard Judge, for his, um, looks like he may get a cabinet position uh with um President Biden's um office or administration, I should say. And I just wanted to send a, a big congratulations to um, um, Mayor Pete on a good, on a job well done, and I'm looking forward to seeing good things in the future.
Thank you so much for your comments. Um, Councilwoman Niskoski?
Thank you, uh Chair McBride or Vice President McBride. Um, I would just want to um acknowledge that our Veterans Day is coming up here this Wednesday, um, and I just want to acknowledge all of the veterans in our community and thank them for their service to our community, to our state, and to our nation. I realize a lot of the celebrations that we normally have for this day uh are probably not going to look the same as they normally do, but nevertheless, I think that it's, uh, we should recognize the service that they have uh given to our community and our country, as I stated, and I would also like to say to any of those that have been in a foreign war, uh especially for me, um, my dad was a Vietnam veteran. Whenever I used to see him, I used to say, hey, welcome home. Um, so to all of them, welcome home, and let you know that I appreciate your service. Thank you for the opportunity to make my comment.
Thank you so much for your comments. Um, is there anyone else from the council? Any new business? Seeing none at this time, we will open it up uh to the privilege of the floor. Clerk Jones, is there anyone um wishing to speak at this time? Clerk Jones?
I'm sorry, I was talking and I didn't realize my mic wasn't on. I do not see anyone wishing to speak on the privilege of the floor at this time.
Thank you so much. Um, seeing none at this time, um, we will call the meeting. It will stand adjourned. Everybody have a good night, and I really appreciate everybody.
Good night.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Thanks.
Be safe, be well.